Good evening.
Good evening.
We call the meeting of county commissioners in order. We apologize just a few minutes late, but we'll try to make up for that. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, those of you who are watching us via livestream. Happy to have you to tune in to what's going on here with the county commissioners and the commission of Liberty County in Georgia. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
I can see evidence there. Hello, Mr. Donahue. How are you today? And Ms. Kemp, good to see you today, too. At this time, we're going to ask Bishop Kendall Page to come and lead us in our invocation and our pledge. It's good to have him to be with the commissioners. They please stand for the invocation.
Joseph. Let us pray. Most holy and righteous God, we come to you today thanking you for this day, this wonderful day we've never seen, we'll never see again. Thank you for the county commissioners, God. Thank you for their families. Thank you for all the people in this county, God, and in this commission, in this area, God, that's representing you. And we pray, God, that you will give them godly wisdom on conducting business at hand, Father, so that it is affecting all of us in a positive way, God. So, God, we thank you for it. We bless you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was that Commissioner Gillan.
Commissioner Frige is on his way from Savannah, so he asked us if we could to delay out of number five, recognition of young lady who works with the youth commission. And she said that she's good with time, so Ms. Mack will come back to you shortly. That takes us on to, yes, I'm sorry, go back to approval of the minutes for the May meetings, commissioners.
I make a motion for approval on the minutes that were presented.
Second.
Motion, second. We approve the May 2024 meeting minutes. Any further discussion? If we're in all in favor, show of hands, please. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Resolution adopted of 2025 budgets.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At the last meeting, we held a public hearing on May 16th, and I did a presentation on the proposed FY25 budget. I've also provided copies to you all this evening with a summary of the general fund revenues and expenditures as proposed. Just a reminder, the total budget request came in approximately 66.8 million. And we worked through budget workshops with you all to make cuts totaling $5 million. The FY25 budget as proposed currently is 61.8 million, which is approximately 6.7% higher than the budget adopted for FY24. And I'm basically here tonight to answer any questions that you all may have.
Yeah, I have a question. How much longer can we, we can wait to, I mean, to approve this tonight is one thing, but do we need to try to wait a little bit and see if any more money's coming in? The last day we can do this.
We have to have something in place. To my understanding, we have to have something in place by June 30th.
Okay, so we can wait till June to see if we got any more?
Sure, if that's what you guys, yes, sir.
Coming in from where, what revenue source?
Whatever revenue source there is. I mean, she's given us a number now, so I mean, there's a possibility we can, we can hold the line for the next few months. Let's see what we got. What is in our fund balance now?
Currently, we have, for general fund, we have a total fund balance of 32.2 million and unreserved is 28.058 million.
Yeah, I'd just like to see us go just till we can feel the pinch, because everybody in my district has already felt the pinch.
Sure.
Those folks in this county that's gotten their assessment and some people, you know, that's having their taxes taken out of when they pay their mortgage every month?
Yes, sir.
They've also been hit, 200, 300, $400. So, we need to, it's my feeling on it, let's hold off as long as we can now. I guess Mr. Brown may have a different approach on it, but I think that that's, that's the best thing for us to do. There's no need to try to approve this tonight, not with the loopholes and everything else we got.
If I understand, and what's that word when they do it against your mortgage, what's that word? Long story short, these are just the appraisal. It's not your tax bill, so they wouldn't know what to take out until your tax bill.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So, there should be no change in anybody's mortgage. What's that word when they?
That's gross.
Yeah, that's right. That's the word, right now, because everything's the same as it was last year right now.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I look at, tell me if I'm right. They actually wouldn't know what their tax bill is until we set the mill.
Right.
Correct.
Am I right?
How do they come up with the assessment they sent out? I came up here a couple of times during that week, right after assessments came out, and people were in all three of these offices asking about their assessment and the amount that it was.
That's good. I wanted to do that.
And, you know, and I seen one would get led to this office, go to this office, we can't help you here, go, because I had to hit all three of them on some paperwork I was having to get done. And it was just amazing. And I can just imagine how many citizens had been in those offices already concerned about that tax assessment. So, how do they come up with that amount?
So, a code section that was passed by a former governor required an estimate to be provided on the tax assessment notice of what your taxes may be the next year. Because those were more erroneous than anything, because of what y'all have just said, cities and counties had not set their mileage rate, nine times out of 10, property owners did not end up paying what was on that bill. And so, this year in the legislature, that was repealed. And this is the last year because of that that is showing up on the assessment notice. Disappointed that it wasn't repealed for this, because it's misleading. It's very misleading, because the governing authorities have not set their mileage rates yet. So, to answer your question, if the value of your home went up and if the mileage rate stayed the same as it currently is, that's what the estimate would be.
Okay.
Or if you add it on to your home, I need to mention that. But if improvements are in, of course, and it's a very complicated system, taxing system that the Board of Assessors has to follow, but they're bound by state guidelines on meeting point values of sales in your area. And if you remember when Ms. Glenda came before you this past year, she told you that the state had warned them that if the values were not increased, there was going to be a penalty per parcel assessed by the state of Georgia. So, they were forced to go up on market rates. Don't think anybody was crazy about that, to meet the state guidelines. And so, those two things together obviously make it very confusing. And we had people last year that showed up in the tax commissioner's office wanting to pay from the assessment notice.
There was a guy in there?
Because it was so misleading. So, it is, I'm glad they repealed it. I'm very disappointed the legislature didn't make it effective January 1st.
Mr. Brown, isn't it true that the value of your property cannot remain the same for how many years? Is it three? It must change?
No, sir. It's really, it's really based on the, it's really based on the, the sales in your area. I mean, they, they are bound by law to take a look at reassessing property no less than every three years.
Three years, okay.
And then your property can stay the same, go up or come down. But I think that's what you were thinking about, is it has to be reassessed no less than every third year to do that.
Do we know what the percentage of the property tax is right now as collections? Since we've seen some?
For the current fiscal year, like what we've collected compared to our budget?
Yes, what the tax collection is.
Yes, ma'am. It's around 97%. I mean, we've
I mean, it's been that way for years.
Yes, correct.
And I'm concerned, you know, with all that's gone transpired in the last year or so. Hopefully, it'll stay there. But I was just wondering for this year, so far, he's staying at 97?
So far, so good. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
And that is why your fund balance is good. I mean, your revenue coming in for the remainder of the year until tax bills go out, as y'all know, is limited to fines and forfeitures and local option sales tax primarily. You won't have any other significant revenue that's achieved.
Okay.
That's what I was going to say it again.
Well, you won't have any significant sources of revenue that are achieved for the remainder of the calendar year, except for those two sources, you know, to do that. And of course, the other thing that's out there, and I can appreciate the position that everybody's in, is that what you may want to consider that freezes things is so that you're in compliance with the law. Because actually, you've got to adopt a budget by state law by July 1st, is to adopt what we would call, and the federal government calls, a continuing resolution that basically would hold everything steady, pay your debts, pay your bills, keep the lights on, but not increase the budget appropriation. We basically take three months of your current operational budget and roll that over into what would be a three-month operational budget for you. By that time, the digest will be here. We should have some preliminary digest numbers, and you'd be able to make an informed decision then as to what you all wanted to do with taxes and tax rates. But it would, then you would comply with the law. You wouldn't be approving anything new that was proposed in the 25 budget. Basically, there would be no changes in how you're running right now for the next 90 days.
Mr. Brown, one other question. On recreation, with the discovery that we came upon the other day, did we increase the recreation budget, or is that going to come out of the just general fund or come from recreational?
It would come out of the recreation budget. I have not gotten clearance from those folks to change that account over. They're still deliberating on what they want to do as far as those energy costs.
Okay. So, the choice is all right to approve the budget as presented. And if I remember correctly, I think I do. When the digest comes in, we can go in and make any adjustments we need to make.
Absolutely. That's the reason I, that's the reason I suggest only 90 days. I mean, we're running just like we're running right now. No changes. Get a chance to look at the revenue that's coming in, get a chance to see the digest. And that we don't, we have checked this morning, there's no significant, that we know of, no significant revenues or expenditures that are really coming up in the next 90 days. I mean, we've paid most of those insurance, things that we had to pay, our
Pension.
Pension plan, thank you. Our pension plan will not come due till the end of the year.
How can you forget?
And so, it's, it'll be like in December or so that we have to make that pension payment for the defined benefit plan. So, I mean, if that's the desire to commission, I'm not suggesting either way, but if that's the desire to commission, then that is, that is an option. But you do have to adopt a budget effective July 1st. It would be, it'd be a 90-day budget, basically, is what it would be.
Those are the two options that we have, to approve the budget as we've gone through the budgeting process, or as Mr. Brown proposes, or suggests. He said, don't put words in his mouth. He just offered it as an option, a continuing resolution, which would give us 90 days to have such time as to see what the digest produces for the county.
And consider, you know, what was proposed in the 25 budget again. I mean, you're basically just rolling like you're doing right now. You're not making any changes to that. Nothing new.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the reason I brought it up, I would like for us to, from all the input that I've got in conversations with people is, you know, this, if we can make it through this month, and maybe make it through the, you know, the half the month of July, whenever we got to make the decision on it, the last meeting in July if we have to. But I just, you know, right now, we don't, I don't know what's in Joey's budget for this year. I don't know what 24 budget is there, how much money's left. I don't know how much money's left in the other constitutional officer's budget. So, you know, there may be plenty of money left out there that we don't need to have it raise that much. That's the one thing that I want to make sure of. Let's get down to where we're grinding, and then we can, we can stop and look at it. But I mean, 90 days, I can, I can wait 90 days. I think some of these people that would benefit from it, they would be willing to wait 90 days. I don't see no, I just know that there's a lot of conversation out there about taxes, and I'm sure you're aware of it.
I am, and that's why I've been encouraging everybody. Once again, as the Brown says, Ms. Glenda gave us fair warning. I hate to use that word, but she informed us of what to expect. So, I've been telling folk, special assistance notices came out, you know, please, if you have any questions, go to our office and see. I'm glad you saw the participation. I was in the meeting on Friday morning, Saturday morning. I encourage folk to do the same, do the same. And then I'm reminded that we, as Ms. Samantha has presented to us and the staff, that we took on some relative new expenditures. You know, we're just now settling into those, i.e. the fire, i.e. the salary survey, and I'm forgetting, oh, the liability, property and casualty insurance.
Yes, sir.
But there's, but there's no problem with continuing resolution. They work right, and that'll give us some time to
Well, and that's just my suggestion. Five other people in here make, or, you know, make, say what they want to say. But that's mine. I just say, hold the line.
One other note, too, and Samantha's notes here, maybe think of this. There are some things that are increasing that you've already approved, such as, that you had to approve really, such as the public defender program for the state. I mean, we'll have to start paying that. But basically, in those 90 days, I think that's what y'all want to do, that you'll get over, you'll be able to close out the fiscal year, you'll get a look at how everybody finishes, you'll be able to see the digest, and also, you know, be able to consider again what you want to appropriate going forward, if anything, you know what I'm saying? Or if you just want to stay the same. But we would only pay the financial obligations we got to pay, you know, only pay the contracts we got we got to pay, no new contracts for extended service. I mean, just basically run status quo like we're running in the 24 budget.
And it would assign a 90-day budget to the various departments and elected officials. They would be held to that 90-day worth of expenses.
Do we know how many of them have already, have they filed appeals yet? Have y'all had any on these?
Glenda's office.
In Glenda's office yet?
I'm sure they have.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how many, though. I can find out, I can definitely find out.
Well, I know we've had some new growth, and we're going to have more new growth, but, you know, we, we know what we got in fund balance, and that's, that's my suggestion, hold the line, but.
If, 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 if we hold the line and go with that proposal, or would we have to go back in and go through the complete budget again?
You could, you don't have to. I mean, it gives you, it does give you a chance to go back in and say, we want to reconsider some additional expenses, or take away some expenses. I mean, you would, you would continue to work towards that end until September, well, until October 1st. By that time, you would really know what the, what you would want to do in tweaking the budget, and then what the millage would need to be.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of concerned about having to go back through it, but it seems like we may have been talking like this last year, or sometime, one year, we discussed something like this going forward.
Well, I remember when Chairman McCowen was there, we.
We did, we did.
We were in a precarious position.
Well, I mean, and that's, that's where we were at.
Yeah, yeah.
We can, we can say this ain't precarious, but the public's in precarious situations.
It's not precarious as compared to what it was then, my brother.
Well, we are trying to look out for, for every, all of our citizens and.
All right, so two options on the floor, continuing resolution, we approve the budget knowing that it's fluid. That good a word, Samantha?
Yes, sir.
That we can always adjust it, so.
There are motions.
Mr. Chair, how y'all doing? Whew, caught my breath now. There we go. Just, just a quick question, and, and I was tuning in on, on the drive in, just about the parks, recreation and leisure. I, I know it was a request for, for three additional, and I think we decided to go with one, but that one is supposed to go in effect January 1st, is that correct?
I believe it was two athletic coordinators, starting January 1st, yes, sir. They did request three to begin July 1st.
Right, and I'm, if I'm correct, I think last year, we did the same thing, that they requested for two people last year.
I don't have that, actually.
And then we, we told them that we will do the hiring January 1 of this year.
We hired one assistant facility manager September 1st, but I don't remember what they had originally requested last year, but it was at least two or three.
At least two, I agree.
Right, but, but that facility is for the gymnasium on the, on the east end, which obviously we had to do that. But they're, they have been short-staffed for a while.
Sure.
And, and, you know, with me being the liaison for them, it, it would only be right for me to speak up on their behalf. And I just know that they're really short-staffed, and I'm not really in favor for us to, to push that down the hill again. So I, I have that issue. And then also, Mr. Chair, I requested additional money for our youth commission and our youth activities. Has that been adjusted on the budget?
No, sure we haven't made any adjustments. Like I say, that, that what's before you now is either to consider that budget, or consider that budget with some adjustments, up or down, or just adopt a budget to keep running July 1st until y'all decide what to do.
And I understand that liaison for the rape department, there are a lot of other departments that have asked.
Sure, yes.
Or.
Understood.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know.
I get it. I mean, but, but there's also other, there are also other departments that all their requests have been answered as well, you know, with all the respect to public safety, you know?
Yeah, I agree with that one.
From the fire department, I mean, it's, I'm just saying, like, you know, it's, if, if we're going to do it, you know, it needs to be across the board. And, you know, even, even with our, our youth department, you know, like I said, this year we have 20 kids, 20, what, 21?
But did we find placement for 30?
Yes, we can.
Even if we.
Yes, we can, yes, we can. Because in the past, we, we maxed out our first year at 36, and now.
Found, we found placements for them.
Absolutely. And, and now we're, we're going backwards, you know? And I'm not trying to compare us to anyone else, but the city of Riceboro has 25 kids, and we're talking about the city of Riceboro. City of Hansville, they had 30 slots, 43 kids applied, guess what they did? They found 43 spots. So, you know, one thing I've noticed about government with my short time being around it, we find money whenever we need to find money. Money is always found, whenever we want to find the money.
Don't I recall that the two, two recreational positions are included, approved?
They're included in the recommended FY '25, yes, sir.
But as for January, correct?
Start date of January, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If we adopted the continuing resolution that we're discussing, would that give us a chance to, would the tax digest be in during that time?
We should have preliminary numbers in August. Generally, we get those from them in July and August.
So the continuing resolution, Joey, then, would, Mr. Brown, excuse me. What's the three-month window, what's the window?
It'd be July, July, August, September.
Okay.
And you could, you could come back anytime in there, you don't have to wait till September, you come back in there anytime and say, hey, we, we figured out what we want to do, we got the numbers. You adopt a 10-month budget after that, or a nine-month budget after that, whatever y'all want to do.
All right, all right. Well, I have my preference, but I used to the, to the commission.
I, I, I know I'm just one person, you know, well, two, you're right, absolutely. So, you know, I, I just, in my opinion, I, I just think about a president wants a trust but verify. So I want to verify before the, the needs of, of the departments that I've requested. I, I want to make sure that it's in there before I move forward, Mr. Chair.
But, but Commissioner, if we, if this commission says, and says publicly, I know you have a problem with it, but in January, those positions are starting, we're not going to renege on that.
We did last year.
You know, I got to go back and try, I'm trying to remember the circumstances.
We did have some cuts at, at millage time.
Absolutely.
But I believe it, well, it was mostly fire because Miller Park had a delay.
Yeah.
But I do know that, that, yes, there were some recreation slots.
That was kicked down the road again.
Originally approved and then were cut as well.
Right.
And then EMS was scaled back to a little bit.
I was going to say, we didn't just pick on recreation.
And, and, and I, and I get it. And, and, you know, it goes back to what I've been saying for a while, you know, we're basing our budget off of the taxation, but we're not looking at ways to generate more revenue. And with all the respect, the easiest and best way to do so is off of commercial growth. And again, I have another request for us to continue to move forward on the Liberty County Economic Development Authority, so we could help promote commercial growth, instead of just looking at the houses that are being built. Because again, all of our taxes are going up. It's not just, you know, the citizens that, that we're thinking about, the phone calls that we, we get, every last one of us up here, our taxes are going up, from a residential standpoint, commercial and everything else. And I, I'm, I'm getting the bills, and, you know, and Commissioner Walden, you know, we had a conversation about that, and, you know, I'm, we're, we're just going in the wrong direction. And, you know, we've, we've, we've been saying this for a while, you know, it's almost like Groundhog Day, same thing, over and over and over and over and over and over and over. And we have to figure out something, because the way we're going is not the right way. And I understand, you know, we, we brought other departments on, from EMS, I understand the fire, I understand the public safety, but also, whenever we're looking at creating a, a community where you can live, work and play, we have to be able to simultaneously walk and chew gum. And we, we're, we're, we're liking with that. And I, I don't know what, I've requested committees, I requested send out emails, I've, I, I don't know what else to do, you know? I mean, you know, just help me help you. You know, we have to figure out alternative measures to bring in revenue. We don't have a choice. And yes, it's on the cost money to do so. There, there's, it's investment, and we have to really look in the mirror and really understand what type of community are we trying to have? Because let me tell you, the, the more things that we have in this community, people really won't be complaining about taxes. I'm, I'm telling you. Yeah, but, but whenever they looking at the increase in taxes, and they still have to drive to Savannah to take their kids to have a good time, and we're spending sales tax dollars in other communities, I mean, if I was Savannah, I, I would, I would be happy. Why not? But if y'all want to make a motion, I'm ready for it.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I'm going to say as we talk, I heard Commissioner Frazier talking about their houses, but also, we need to take a look at our industries to make sure that they are paying their fair share, because each industry adds an additional burden onto the Liberty County, just like it adds an additional burden onto fire service, law enforcement and EMS. So we need to make sure that the industries that are here are paying their fair share, and I believe that would make a big difference. That's all I got to say.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that, and I started this whole probably the wrong way, but I do want to, I, I would like for us to hold this for 90 days. Joey, you think we can do that?
Yes, right, I mean, actually.
I mean, don't adopt this budget tonight.
Right, right, well, can, can I ask that you adopt a budget tonight, this just a continuing resolution of the current expenditures for 90 days?
But do y'all feel comfortable with this one here, we going to be all right for 90 days?
I, I do, with, yes, sir, with the 24.
Yeah, just continue as is.
We're just going to continue the 24, broke's all we're going to do.
I want, yeah, there's, there's too many things to do, and gun smoke comes on in a little bit, but I want to, I'd like to make a motion, and if you, if you would allow me to, to, let's go ahead and adopt the 2025 budgets, and we'll be back here to make the final cuts and whatever else we have to do.
In 90 days?
Final review.
90 days.
September, Joey says, sir.
Or before, I mean, or before, if you have information before.
Well, we can do it before, but I want, let's give us a window in to work with.
That'd be great.
It's a continuing resolution, right?
Continuing resolution for 90 days, and I'd like to ask if Samantha can read that continuing resolution, because it's pretty specific about just paying current obligations.
Whereas the administrative staff of Liberty County has prepared and submitted to the governing authority of the Liberty County a continuing resolution with regards to the general operations budget for a period beginning July 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2024. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County has reviewed a 90-day general operations budget set at an amount equal to the county's current monthly operational budget, including and honoring all current contracts, obligation and existing debts without consideration for any others. It is considered in the best interest of Liberty County Board of Commissioners to adopt this continuing resolution for the period July 1, 2024, ending September 30th, 2024. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Liberty County that the continuing resolution hereto and may part of for the period July 1, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2024 is approved.
Make a motion for approval of the resolution?
Yeah, I'll have you second.
I'll second.
Motion to second, we approve the continuing resolution as, as stated.
And I have a, just a draft of taking our FY '24 budget and doing three twelts for the general fund, if you want me to pass this out to you all, but.
Any further discussion?
Three twelts, that means three months out of 12.
Three months, yes, sir.
Just for clarity.
All right, Mr. Brown says, as soon as we get that information about the digest, we can start looking at the final budget, ever that comes in.
I'll just let them go ahead and pass it.
All in favor? Show your hands, please. Continued resolution is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Lock is ticking on 90 days.
Absolutely.
Or, or before. Commissioner Frazier says you're here, Ms. Mack has been waiting on you patiently.
Hey.
Who's going to present her to us?
Well, we were going to go ahead and do it, because we knew he was going to be late.
Man, Savannah traffic caught me, man.
Like for his own funeral.
And, oh, hey, and I don't have lights on my vehicle, so I had to drive the speed limit.
Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners, we have before us Ms. Kyla Mike, who served as our chairwoman for our youth commission this past year. She was very engaging and very energetic. She's been very active in her whole entire high school career in leadership development and working to do various activities in Liberty County to make Liberty County a better place. And she did a great job this year, and we hate to see her go. She graduated, and she'll be matriculating at Kennesaw State University, where she will do something in the medical profession, that is her heart and that is her passion.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kyla Mike, nice to meet you all. I guess I speak on myself, should I? I guess I'll just thank y'all, thank y'all for the opportunity. I don't have a personal passion in government, but I did learn a lot from the group, and I, it's, it is nice to look at, I don't know, maybe if I was open to a little younger, I probably would have done it, but my heart's in medical, so I do appreciate y'all, and I do appreciate Mr. Frazier for putting in the time, and Mr. Mosley for also putting in the time and the patience with the kids. And I had a great time, it was fun, going to Atlanta and getting to know everybody, and it was nice to be the only senior, because I do like the attention just a little bit. So it was nice to be the only senior, but I appreciate it, and I'm going to take it up there to Atlanta and use it, and use all my skills as a chairwoman and all that I learned. Yeah.
Were you able to use that experience in any of your applications?
Um, yes, I did get to put down a few, I got to put, I put down that I was a chairwoman for the LCYC for everything I applied to, so I don't know if it was.
People love to identify leadership skills.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it was added to my list of things, and it's in my resume and all that good stuff.
Let it follow you for the rest of your life.
I know, it will, and I have Mr. Mosley, and I have his, his, he's a recommendation now, so this is good for me.
Good for you.
Yes.
Uh, medical, any, any idea where in medical?
Yes, I specifically want to go into travel midwifery, so I want to become a midwife with a doula certification. So I want to go get my masters, and I want to get my C and M, and then I want to go travel with it.
How much of that can you do at Kennesaw, where you have to go to?
Um, no, I'll, so I'll continue with Kennesaw, because they have a nursing school, so I will get my bachelor's in, in science, and then I will go in and get my C and M with my masters, and then I'll be done with, and just do it all through Kennesaw.
County has a good bit of students that attend Kennesaw, so.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm excited. I'm excited for it.
Happy for you?
Thank you.
Come come this way and let's present you this. Commissioner Frazier, you want to say something?
Oh, um, just thank you. You know, thank you for your service. You know, uh, thank you for your service and and your definitely your leadership. And of course, you're gonna be missed, but you know. Ho- hopefully, you know, you'll come back to Liberty County.
Thank you.
Here's here's my philosophy.
And thank you for sharing about your experience here, because what I want young people to do, to be proud of their home. I'm not sure how many years you've been here.
Yeah, yeah, I've been all all year.
So even if you decide to live away, I want you always to be able to revert back to your time here and what this community invested in you.
Yes.
You call it an investment.
Yeah.
And we can already see that it's paying off.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Everybody in?
You got it? Look at Maria, count it down.
Three, two, one.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I know, yes, we're proud.
There you go, there you go. She even says.
It's pretty catchy.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's the plan. I'm gonna, that's why I went there once. Thank you.
Train the world, she says. Liberty County proud, Liberty County proud. Proud of her.
Yeah, she she was our only senior, so.
All right, uh, thank you, Ms. Mack, again. Please keep us updated on your on your progress.
Thank you.
Department of Reports, L C P C, Mr. Ricketson. Hello, sir, how are you? Good. If if while you're presenting, give us an update on, I know your next town hall is in end of the month.
Yeah, uh, in the in Midway, at the East End Community Center on May the twenty.
June.
Uh, June, I'm sorry. We already we already passed May, didn't we? See if I can find it.
And I heard that one at Riceboro went very well.
It did. We had a we had a good turnout there. Mr. Stevens was there. Uh, that'll be June the twenty-fourth, Monday, June the twenty-fourth, at the East End Community Center at six o'clock.
Very, all the citizens to go sit in and.
Yes, sir.
Listen and participate.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, uh, our.
Public hearing, Mr. Chairman, for example.
Some moments here.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, show your hands. They continue, sir.
Our our zoning petition this evening has been submitted by uh, Dryden Enterprises. They want to add on to the Alder Grove subdivision that's been pretty successful thus far. This is on uh, Isle of Wight Road. Uh, y'all might recall, uh, a few years ago, maybe two or three years ago, you approved them to build a single-family subdivision as a pod uh, for up to two hundred and thirty-two lots. Uh, they are now trying to add an additional twelve and a quarter acres to that, and that will yield an additional twenty-three lots. So that's what they're asking you to consider this evening. You can see the uh, parcel number there where this is located. Uh, current property is currently, this this additional property is currently zone AR one and they want to add it to the existing pod that y'all have already approved. This is a sign and the ad in the Coastal Courier, uh, this is uh, on Isle of Wight Road looking uh, toward the east. And that's the Isle of Wight Road, you see the curve, that's the existing entrance of Alder's Grove there. It's intended to go up and around. I'll show you on the uh, the plan that y'all approved. This road's supposed to extend and it'll, as it's shown, it'll go all the way up through this new area here that's that's shown here outlined in red. You can see Isle of Wight Road kind of going past it and around toward the creek. And this is the zoning map, just showing that this property, uh, this this area down here is the pod that's already approved. This area over here is Glee Plantation, which is kind of out of this discussion. And then this is the area right here shown in red, the area that's uh, they're proposing to add to Alder Grove. And it's currently zone AR one, agricultural, residential. This is the flood map. There's a little bit of a flood plain sort of in the upper area right here of the of the property. And of course, there's some flood plains down in the existing Alder Grove as well. And they're they're having to uh, adjust for those in their development plans. And this is the wetland map, uh, wetlands, uh, there's just a small little segment of wetlands here in the middle of this area. Uh, there is, this area right here shows up as wetlands, but I've seen some uh, some of their delineations there. So really, the wetlands are isolated over here in this area here. So this area is not gonna be a problem to develop when they run that road through here and on out the other end.
Jeff.
Yes, sir.
If you will, go back to that slide. I never heard it, but help help me out. You say it's doing delineations so they can use the other.
These uh, these areas right here are are what you can find on your on your county G I S viewer. You can go in there and look and that's what the National Wetlands Inventory identifies as wetlands. But when somebody wants to develop, they they have somebody go out and actually walk the property instead of just doing it from a a mile high. And they they actually state where the wetlands are based on their their training and wetlands identification. So the actual um, wetlands delineation here is right here, isolated down in this this corner down here. So they're not gonna be disturbing that. That'll remain as wetlands, but there will be houses uh, from the extension of this road up through back out to Isle of Wight. And this is their GDP amendment, which is uh, basically just adding on to the Alder Grove pod document that you already did. It basically says that they're gonna be doing uh, the four-type houses that are already in the Alder Grove, already been approved for that. Either patio, small, single-family, large, single-family and executive homes. And you can see the sizes there. What you previously approved allows them to mix and match these types of homes in the, within the development as long as they don't exceed the overall lot limit. And previously, you had approved two hundred and twenty-three, two hundred and twenty-three lots and now they can go up to two fifty-five if you approve this uh, request tonight. And this is just the overall phasing, uh, phase one and phase two are the, what you've already approved. That just shows how the lots lay out. And you can see that little wetland area there that we were looking at earlier is over here in this corner down here. So everything else is gonna be developed. And you can see how that that lot currently stops about right here, but it's gonna go all the way through and come back out on Isle of Wight Road up here.
So these would be houses of varying sizes.
Varying sizes, that's right.
Jeff, when when you're looking here on your phase one on Jane Lane.
Yes.
Um, I see a opening there.
They did leave.
That was talked about earlier on for uh, fire protection or something, they was.
It was an emergency exit, but now you're gonna have two, but with with this amendment, if y'all approve it, they will have two uh, full road accesses out and not just this little lane here. So it'll actually be a better situation than than it would be if you just had the emergency-only access off of Jane.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Although we're gonna come out on Jane Street, but both of them gonna come out back to Isle of Wight Road, correct?
That's right. I I don't know that Jane's ever gonna be anything other than an emergency exit because I don't think they were able to work out anything with Jane. So that's just gonna be emergency only. The the main access is gonna be down this this main road that that comes off of Isle of Wight here and then circles around and comes back into Isle of Wight further down.
What what are we looking at for traffic? We adding more houses and we not seeing anything up here about traffic, infrastructure, nothing. It's getting bad. The convenience centers down there are being overrun now. I know we welcome growth, but we have to do something with what we have.
Wasn't that in our safety? Isle of Wight interest, let me talk about that as a, as a just discussion about safety improvements where Isle of Wight meets eighty-four.
It was just a talk about, but.
I'm trying to remember. You remember?
So intersection improvements, but but the warrants weren't there for a signal for GDOT to.
Okay.
On their, on their state route to do it.
Well.
But but we got, we were gonna plan the intersection improvements for signalization.
Right.
And we're already moving forward with this Culbertson study to go ahead and make arrangements to try to go ahead and move on that convenience center to to move in.
How far, I mean, these houses are being built within a year's time. And we got an issue now. Jeff, I'm just not trying to embarrass any of your people on the planning board. What kind of classes do they attend?
The Carl Vinson Institute provides classes for, you know, basic uh, planning one O one and one O two. And we try to get them in there as as we get a new planning commissioner on. All of our, all of our planning commissioners have been trained up to this point, but as we get a new one on, we do send them to that training. Uh, sometimes we have to send them to Athens, sometimes the training is is held by CRC. And we try to do it as close as we can to hold down the cost, but they've all been trained.
I mean, the reason why I'm asking that question because we're making all, they're making the decision and sending it to us. And some of these decisions are just not adding up.
Well, I mean, this is, it this, we're talking about incremental change here. Y'all already approved the two hundred and twenty-three lots.
I understand that. I understand that, Jeff, but we still adding more. I don't care if it's one more. We adding more to what's there.
Right.
And the problem that we already talked about, we not, there's no action on it at all. Now, I'm being beat up about that quite regularly. I know you can stand right there and say, does it have effect on this and have effect on that? But I see it different.
Uh, it's it's increasingly becoming a topic with with every development that goes on. And we are a growing county. I'm going to Heinzville on Fri- on Thursday. We got four zoning cases and there's gonna be arguments made on three of them that eighty-four can't handle the traffic. So you you can make an argument to stop development if you want to, but it's uh, we've we've got some pretty robust, robust plans for traffic improvements that are T-S plots funded. And if we can just follow through with those, we will, we'll make it as good as it can be. But anytime you allow additional growth on any of our corridors, you're going to uh, the 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 overall performance of the road is gonna be incrementally decreased.
But you understand what I'm saying?
I do, I I do, I it but but if your choice is either to uh, consider the development and try to make some incremental improvements or just maybe just don't approve development anymore and they can go to other communities. It's it's kind of where we are. We we are, we are kind of in the lens for developers and uh, we and they're not building this stuff because it's not selling. Everything they build is selling and you're you're right. You rightly pointed out that this this subdivision is going fast and it'll probably be completed within a year or so because they've got, they've got a lot of, a lot of construction going on there.
Right, with with that within completion, but we're not making any step to improve.
We're making some now, but it really, it just won't, it it may not meet the time that he completes the house. But we are making improvements on that, as Joey just stated, we are, that's coming, you know? But I'm not saying it's gonna match the same time as.
It's not gonna match.
But it is.
But what what do we do in the present time for the people who are already there and the one coming? You figure for the, each house down there, you figure two cars. I'm gonna say roughly two cars per house in this subdivision. Plus what's already coming off of Isle of Wight and in the other area. You ought to be down there sometime trying to come out in the afternoon. So I don't know what time when someone go down there and do a study, what time do they go?
Well, one one thing that Joey pointed out is that that intersection at Isle of Wight and eighty-four doesn't meet the warrants for a traffic signal. So as as traffic increases, those warrants will become uh, it will possibly meet warrants for a traffic signal, but currently it doesn't. So GDOT's not going to uh, allow a signal on at an intersection that doesn't meet warrants.
Well, can we go ahead and make some kind of step, Chairman, to improve the intersection? If you have a right turn lane coming out, you know what I mean?
It'd be a safety piece, wouldn't it?
It'd be the safety piece, and you can, what you need to do is go ahead and just have that drawing submitted and submit it to GDOT. GDOT would still have to approve that.
Because it's still coming on to a state route.
Uh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's only, it'd be on state right of way that network would have to occur.
You can't get out.
But we could, we could go ahead and approach them about some design to do that with City of Midway, I mean, City of Midway, but we definitely can.
Yes, sir.
But we had already talked about this.
We did.
I mean, when it, when Mr. Dryden first, that was the the topic of the conversation was. Uh, Commissioner Stevens brought it up, you know, about the turn lane or whatever. But um, I mean, GDOT has not been notified about the the growth in there, I mean, where they stand on it, I mean, right now.
We we hadn't submitted a plan to them, uh, again, because it was the City of Midway. But we we have, that whole corridor plan shows improvements to that intersection right there, uh, where that is. And so we met with them, we we told them about that growth, yes.
Okay, but when you leave out of Isle of Wight Road and you want to go across and go left, that's one thing. But the traffic that's on this side, is there an avenue for them to get on around that traffic?
No, it is not.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that's a county road, ain't it?
Right.
So that's where we need to, I mean, let's fix it there and let them go right. And then other ones can sit there and get in.
Well, no, it'll be on, it'll be on GDOT right of way where that where that runaround would happen. They still.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about, you got the regular lane, have a turn lane. When they come up there, traffic will be sitting in that.
It'll still be G, GDOT would have to approve a turn lane there.
Yeah, because of the right of way.
So it's still in their car.
On Isle of Wight Road. See, if you're coming out Isle of Wight Road, the traffic that wants to turn right, have we got a lane right there? We, that's, that's what I'm saying, if we had a lane right there that they could be sitting in and then they could, we could get the approval of it.
GDOT would have to approve it, but the county would probably have to fund it.
Yeah, GDOT would have to approve it, yeah.
But I mean, the 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 first district, I mean, that may be going, what you want to do there is try to have a leash waiting there on that side. Because it's ninety percent of them probably is gonna come out and go toward Heinzville and some of them is gonna go toward the the down there.
Right.
But the thing is, when they go in there and they look at these houses, they've already drove by those two problems. And if they still buy a house, then they understand what the issue is when they leave out. So that's uh, I mean, it ain't like, it ain't like it it come up overnight, you know, they gotta go in the road and come out the road, so.
And we may not want to, and I, Commissioner Stevens, yeah, we talked about this as a safety enhancement, no doubt about it. But but I'm reminded right now of the of the neighborhood in and around the Performing Arts Center coming out to eighty-four. You know, I'm like you, but those houses sell like crazy, you know? Uh, you would think perhaps that the residents would say, oh, I'm not sure I want to have to deal with that, but they buy them with their eyes closed.
That's five hundred houses that weren't there eight years ago.
Griffin Park is a huge, how many houses in Griffin Park?
Close to a thousand and nine.
I'm gonna tell you.
Yeah, and they coming out to most of Sunday one ninety-six, some of them come on the Live Oak Church Road, but majority are coming out.
Majority of them come comes straight out of one ninety-six.
Even where you're at, when you try to come out to Veterans Parkway.
I got to go, yeah.
I mean, you go out and make a ride, so it's everywhere.
Everywhere.
And it's better than how it was.
Well, yeah, I know.
It's everywhere.
Yeah.
But if they buy it, they saw what they were getting.
At the um, Mr. Chairman, at the top, um, coming out of um, that new entrance or exit out there. Yeah, um, do you know what the distance is from from that curve? If if someone was coming, coming up to Isle of Wight Road and you, you know, you you got people going down Isle of Wight Road. Do you know the distance between that entrance and um, and where that curve um, comes? I was just thinking if someone come around there at um.
Right at a thousand feet.
Further down, yeah.
It's further down?
It's further down.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, the cur- that 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 curve that you're talking about is right, the first curve or the curve past it?
The first curve right at a thousand feet.
The curve on on the left right there. Yeah, that's that's the curve, there's.
It's Ada, past Ms. Ada, isn't it?
Yeah, right past, it's about fifty feet past Ms. Ada Homes.
It's on, it's on down.
So you're looking at close uh, thousand to eleven hundred feet from that intersection.
Okay.
Joey, now, Trent was working on the plans for the convenience center and all that.
Yes, sir.
Where is that at?
For following.
Yeah, he he's already got the plan of the issues dealing with the property acquisition.
Okay.
Tell him to send me a copy, please.
Okay.
Trying to get some property acquisition, okay. All right, so it's in the works. My phone is, I know we're working on it.
I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, I hadn't seen it, but I remember we were working on it.
Just to sit up here and talk about what he has, we haven't seen anything. It's a moot point with me.
I know he was working on it, I remember that.
So so, uh, Mr. Chair, real quick, uh, following up with what Commissioner Gillis was talking about. So that's enough, a thousand feet, is is that enough, I guess, distance? So it won't be a blind spot with with people trying to come out of there?
At the speed limit, I mean, I think that, I think that road is is posted for a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, so I I think it wouldn't meet the distance.
Right, so uh, and since that that is one of our roads, you know, I've I've seen like in other communities where they might have like a mirror there or or they might have a a caution light when someone's coming around that that curve, well, you know, that it alerted people coming out of there. Is that something that we could look at because of, uh, since that's one of our roads?
It's certainly something you could look at and and you're gonna get another look at this too. This is just the zoning, uh, and if if, when this goes to construction, you're, we're gonna be bringing you a preliminary plat and you're gonna approve the design. This is just a a concept. So that could be something that you require as part of the preliminary plat approval for this this phase.
Pretty well, Jeff, once the preliminary is. Pretty well, Jeff. Once the preliminary is approved, you bring back the other thing, it's a done deal almost.
Man, am I the only one that don't have my, my name tagged? Chair and Commissioners, you know, this reminds me of what's going on with the Comprehensive Plan Review. This is very kind of thing that, you know, people should be thinking about. So long-term, this, you know, those folk on Isle of Wight need another access to eighty-four other than coming out that one road, you know? So somebody needs to be planning for that in the future. I'm not sure where that is through all these woods and wetlands and stuff, but Commissioner Stevens, you more familiar with than I am, but there needs to be some other way long-term for them to come out to eighty-four without everybody having to come up.
Well, the only other place you can dump it is Commissioner Wallen, what was that dairy farm down in Martin? Was it Martin Farm?
Glebe, Glebe Plantation?
Glebe. That's the only other place I think you can actually dump it down, and then you're gonna dump it right into the traffic, right there at ninety-five and eighty-four.
Well, all we can do, we know the rest of it's gonna be developed too. So we approve this and hopefully GDOT, whoever GDOT is, because you can't never get them on the phone either. And maybe they'll approve a, a light going in there. I mean, that's, that's the only thing that we can do on it, I guess.
But, and I know we're getting in the weeds here now, but, but even if Glebe Plantation is developed one day, perhaps whoever's sitting here could ensure there is a connecting road between this subdivision and that subdivision. Cause coming out to ninety-five is gonna be traffic signal, so you wouldn't be able to, you know, exit that way, so.
That would be an opportunity that, that might come along.
Well, I think you might be able to tap through somewhere up there on the Isle of Wight Road. I mean, I don't know. It's been bought and sold two or three times, hasn't it?
Glebe, it has. That's right.
Okay. All right, Mr. Jeff.
Okay, I'll continue through the presentation.
Thank you for your indulgence.
Our zoning analysis, y'all are familiar with this. Does this property have reasonable economic value? Is this currently zoned? Yes. This, this proposed use is consistent with the J-Less study. Number three, the proposed use does conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan because it designates this area as residential low density, which is what this is, is a single-family neighborhood. Number four, will there, will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby property? No. Is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses as a continuation of the nearby uses of the single-family residents in the, in the area? Number six, will the zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, including streets and transit and schools, utilities and public safety? We've answered no.
Jeff, now, on that answer right there, that was me. My answer would have to be yes.
The, the critical word there is undue.
It's possible, yes.
No possible, yes.
Every, every residence you put out there is gonna put a burden, but the, the key word there is undue burden.
Undue burden.
Okay. Next slide is, I mean, next question, number seven, would this allow short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? No. Number eight, would the change cause a domino effect and encourage sprawl? No. Number nine, are there unique historical sites which might, which might be adversely impacted? We haven't noted any. Number ten, is this parcel in a flood hazard area? I did show you a map that showed that a little bit of this, this new addition there is in the flood plain. Number eleven, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? No. And number twelve, are there unique conditions with support approval or denial? And we just pointed out there that this, this would be an extension of the existing Alders Grove Pud. Our planning commission heard this request at their May twenty-first meeting, and they recommended, unanimously recommended approval with standard and special conditions, and the special condition is that prior to consideration of the preliminary plat, which has got to come back here for y'all to approve, that the City of Midway shall, will have committed, formally committed to provide water and sewer services. The city has, has committed at this point to provide water and sewer to all of Alders Grove, but they need to get approval for the additional twenty-three lots, and that needs to happen before they come back here for a preliminary plat.
When would, when would they be approached? Is that up to?
I think it's already in the works, but they, they got to, they got to do it in a meeting and vote for it.
Joey, the, who's picking up the, the trash out there? Are we doing it or is some other holder?
They just go to the convenience center.
Convenience center, which is packed now. It's packed now.
Why have some of those, once again, in the weeds, some of those private companies taking advantage of that business?
I don't, I really don't know. And I do think you'll see them start to, once you get those.
It's about the numbers.
Right. The conger get setting makes worth the money.
It has to be in a certain vicinity.
That's the kind of areas where you got enough, enough bang for your buck.
Absolutely.
Right now Alders Grove has so many construction trucks, you can't get in there.
I mean, we can, but all our trucks are owned by the city of Heinzville. What about over that, that subdivision off Charlie Butler? Is the, they going to that same convenience center as well?
Yes.
They would be because.
But, but they're still using the.
For the.
Dry trash. You oughta see, you oughta see that site on a Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, mine all the time. Yeah.
And, and, Mr. Chair, I, I know, when was that, last year or the year before, whenever we had a, we looked at the possibility of, of, I guess, eliminating those particular trash convenience centers, and we were looking at possibly going. I mean, honestly, it's, with this type of growth, it's gonna be a time when we not only have a choice to do something. You know, I mean, whenever we're looking at these, they're not building subdivisions like they used to, like my neighborhood with a hundred houses. There are two hundred, three hundred, four hundred houses, and obviously, once this gets up, just like what, what we're talking about, it's a lot more land out there where, how many more houses could be built out there, Jeff? A couple more hundred?
They could do a couple hundred if, if they could get the property owner to sell them the land.
Absolutely. And, and eventually, even if the current property owner doesn't wanna sell, you know, especially if, if their kids don't live here, they're gonna sell. And so it, it might not be today or tomorrow, but we, we definitely need to start considering it. Because even if we're talking about redoing and remove, moving that, that's a couple million dollars. So is, is it even feasible for us to do that than just going and spending the money for the future?
You remind me of that conversation when we had the assessment done, the solid access, and all that was, we talked about the future. But I don't remember all the conversation, the outcome of that assessment when it comes to, as Commissioner Frey stated, having expanding them or, or just planning for them to, to phase out in twenty fifty or whatever, you know, being facetious.
We basically brought it back to you and you looked at it and said basically, we don't, we don't think we wanna do that right now.
Right. But, but since that conversation, how, how many times have you been up here, Mr. Rickerson, with, with new development?
It's been a lot.
A lot. So that, that might be a conversation, Mr. Chair, that, that we might have to, you know, bring back to the table. Cause if, cause the last convenience center we, we did was. Gunbridge, right? And that was what.
Expanded it. Disexpanded it this year.
Expanding. But even with expansion, how, how much did that cost us again? That was like a million dollars, right?
Almost, yeah.
A norm.
Right at a million.
Right.
Six, six eighty-six, actually.
Right. And, and that's just expansion, you know, and obviously, that convenience center definitely is gonna have to be expanded. So the question is, do we spend the money there or do we spend the money over here?
And that would have to be moved.
Yeah.
Really sell the land and.
Exactly. So that's, that's a, that's a whole, whole nother fish.
Quick fishing.
Right. I mean, we, you know, that goes from a brim to a bass real quick. So I, I don't know. But that's, that's something I, I think we definitely need to, need to look at. And just one more quick question, Mr. Chair. So we're saying that the City of, of Midway is gonna provide the water and the sewer. And I know we've been talking about expansion with the, with the sewer connection from, on a county standpoint. Where, so the City of Midway, they have a, a wastewater plant? How, how does that work? Where is it?
They got a spray field.
Oh, a spray fill. I got you. Yeah. And, and even with those spray fills, after, after a certain amount of people connecting, is, is that still?
It expands.
They have to?
Yeah. They, they got room to expand it.
Okay. See, Commissioner Gillis, I remember a little bit. There we go.
Work, you worked out there for a minute. All right, Mr. Rickerson has given us this presentation, and I think we had some healthy discussion. But I guess, Mr. Brown, let's just make sure that we get updated on where, you say now it's land acquisition, that's the, that's the holdup.
Absolutely. I'll get a copy of that plan that was, it's been a while, but I'll get a copy of that out to everybody.
And otherwise, it's getting the, the request to DOT for any kind of, okay, we'll follow up on that.
Right.
All right. With that being said, she entertained the motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
You were thinking about it?
Man, gun smoke about to come on, man.
Motion in a second that we accept the recommendation from Mr. Rickerson, I was, I was a PC, but give you your title. With, knowing that, we're gonna get the update from Trent on where he is with the land acquisition for the convenience center. That we're gonna, we're gonna file the paperwork for, for DOT to put the.
Action in my eyesight.
It's coming. It's on the record. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Our position. We're gonna have to stay.
Nope. Vote no.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do you see it there?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rickerson. Board of appointments.
We're ready.
Oh, wow.
No, y'all not.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gillis, before you get started, I have one person that mentioned to me about the historical culture, and I don't think he turned in an application, but do you have anybody for that?
We had a couple of applicants.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
What, what, this one was from Riceburg.
Mr. Chairman, on the, the committee, we reviewed the applications and we communicated via email. We didn't have a chance to meet in person, but we do have some recommendations, and I'll take the first one, the Agent Services Advisory Council. We have two vacancies, and our recommendation is Ms. Barbara Dansler and Ms. Kathy Hensley. That's all.
Motion, we accept those.
Second. Mr. Brown, you have those names?
I do, yes.
Okay. All right. Ms. Barbara Dansler, I got that. And I missed the other one, Hensley?
Hensley.
Hensley.
H-E-N-S-L-E-Y.
Ms. Hensley for the Agent Services Advisory Council?
Yes.
I had a motion in a second, did I?
A motion. Got a second.
A second, all right. Further discussion? All in favor, show your hands. All right, Ms. Dansler and Ms. Hensley are appointed.
What, what's the age qualification for that again? Sixty-five?
Over sixty, I remember that.
Yeah, you got to be, you're not old enough.
Okay. I appreciate it. Yeah, now, keep on living, man.
On those applications, there, there was no, I mean, I have no way of knowing. That, that's, that's not on there. It's not, it's not, it's not like a happy birthday song, how old are you? That's not on there.
Is the criteria for the, for the appointments a part of the application?
It's on the bylaws, isn't it?
But not on the application?
No, it's not on the application.
I don't think the application has got a specific, they're not specific to each board, so it wouldn't surprise me if it's not, it doesn't ask your age on there probably. But I, I'll, let me double check. I'll double check Maria tomorrow.
Let's confirm before we know about.
Before we make any announcements to, you know, subject to them meeting the criteria.
I mean, so we gonna go ahead with these and?
Until such time is, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we, is that something that we need to add to that, to that particular board, Joey?
Probably would add to that, um, application.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And the next one was the Culture and Historic Resources Committee, and there were two vacancies, but we only had one applicant, and that's Mr. Timothy Grace, and that's our recommendation.
Make a motion that we appoint Mr. Grace.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, we appoint Timothy Grace to the Culture, Historical and Resources Committee, knowing they would still have one vacancy, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, sign up. Show your hands, please. All right, Mr. Grace is appointed.
And on the hand pole, the Heinzville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee, we had two vacancies, and our recommendations are for Ms. Angela Powell and Ms. Leilani Sykes.
Right. Make a motion, we accept those.
Motion, second, we have Angela Powell, Ms. Leilani Sykes. Is that right? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands. All right.
If you know Ms. Powell.
I know.
Now, I remember the issue had been from the former person's attendance. Make sure these people are aware of what, what's required. I'm kinda concerned about the other one too. These things may sound, for lack of a better word, sexy, but, but you have to have a true interest in these committees. Otherwise, you're just gonna show right away.
And the ones that have served, let's make sure we send them a letter.
County does. All right, that's it.
Yes, sir.
All right. Administrative report. Thank you, committee, for your, you worked with the board of appointments.
Yes, I'll, I'll try to be real quickly to move on. Just a few updates on, on the things happening here. We did energize the Miller Park Station this week. As a matter of fact, today it fully stood up. So we got a CO on it. There are still some things on the punch list that has to be done. Anticipate those getting corrected within the next sixty days. So a little bit about that project. Public Works coming along really ahead of schedule, very well. I'll have some drone pictures of this later on. But you can see the bays coming up, the building in the back left corner is the mosquito control storage shed for all the chemical storage that's going on at that facility. But you, you see the concrete. They've been basically working on the concrete. They've been doing some interior work to also go ahead and finish the steel studs that'll go up. But again, that building's coming along very, very well and on schedule. Health Department proposals, we actually had three that were submitted this afternoon. On it forward, it was submitted this afternoon, so the selection committee will actually be meeting this week, and we anticipate having your recommendation back, provided everything checks out on those proposals and on those folks that submitted by the end of this week for your next board meeting.
Are they familiar contractors or they?
They are. They are familiar contractors, yes, sir. And we've sent the stuff over to the MWP in the sealed envelopes for her to evaluate, so we have to wait on that to happen also. Yes, sir.
Joey, I know we talked about this on this health department. We do have some room for expansion?
You've got room for expansion built into the building. I mean, it won't be fully occupied when they, when they take it over. And you do have some room out the back, but it's limited.
But we're, but we're also gonna move the Brendan them in the back, back there, so they'll be.
Yes, sir.
I mean, later on, we may find a place for them and we can utilize that too. Okay.
That's, that's very true. Yes, sir.
Joey, but that's the public works building?
That was just some inside shots.
How, how many maintenance bays? Four?
Four, four. I believe there's actually five. There's, there's four, four regular and two heavy equipment.
Okay.
Three regular and two heavy equipment.
But ain't much heavy equipment can get in there.
It's large enough, it's size for the garbage trucks and everything with the lift and, and all of that.
About to say, I don't want them to pull in there with the low boy with the machine.
No, it's taken back. T-S plot twenty-four, you're, you're aware of, T-S plot number two. The entity agreements have been sent out. They've gotta come back to us, no later than the eighteenth of July. You'll issue, you'll, you'll approve the IGA, subject to their final approval by that date, and that night you'll call for the election on the eighteenth of July, and then the promotional kickoff starts on the first of August. And we do have, we're already on the schedules to go out and to some of the clubs and do presentations on that.
The Commissioners in their respective district, please, please push T-S plots.
This is a busy slide, and I'll, you know, get you this slide so that you can see it closer. I just got this actually last night from Rachel Hatcher, who's part of the planning team for transportation projects. Commissioner Stevens, I wanna put this up here too. This is the bridge at Peacock Creek. This is the latest from GDOT, and it actually shows utilities and construction on bridge replacement starting in FY twenty-five. So that will be sometime between now and next June, that, that'll occur on that project. The second one up there are intersection improvement projects that really go along with a median construction that runs from Flemington all the way through Heinzville. If I remember right, out past Chick-fil-A, actually to Casey Drive, that comes out there. Those are scheduled in twenty twenty-seven fiscal year. So that's a project that'll, you know, greatly. So that's a project that'll greatly impact the traffic coming on eighty-four, hopefully.
Totally funded by GDOT.
Totally funded by GDOT to do that.
Joey, on that, and I, I know on the, when we have the policy committee meeting with the Hampo, and I think I brought it up in there. But, and this is totally funded by GDOT, do, do the local stakeholders, would they have any say-so about those raised medians and, and that, what the center lane is now? Whether it's gonna be concrete or grassed or, or whatever, cause I, you know, I just, every time I go to Richmond Hill and you see those guys out there in the center with that sixty mile an hour traffic trying to cut grass out there, that's gotta be the most dangerous thing. And, and from Dairy Queen out to Flowers Drive, it, it'd be my guys out there in the center doing that, and that's, that's pretty dangerous.
So it's part, it's part of GDOT's approval process, cause I'm sure there are federal funds in there, they've gotta have a public hearing, open house on it? So, I mean, you, you will be, as government agencies, able to get a set of those plans ahead of time, I'm sure, to be able to look at them and make comments back directly to GDOT, but there'll be some formal hearings that are required too, as part of that process. You won't have to wait on those, I'm sure, bless you, I'm sure.
I think it'd be good for you to have that conversation with Paul Simonton though.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's just about as dangerous as, as it can get. And you know, and they gonna do something similar on, on one ninety-six too, but one ninety, the traffic on one ninety-six is nothing like it is on eighty-four. But even, even with that being said, I mean, cosmetically, of course, it looks better, but like you said, with safety, so why can't we just turf it? I mean, you would still have to, let's say if you put a, a raised island that's concrete, you still gonna have cracks in it and you have to get out there from time to time to spray the, to spray the cracks and, and weed it, but that's different than getting out there with a zero turn cut. And in some cases, like in, I think in Richmond Hill, they got crepe myrtles from, from one forty-four to Kingsberry.
Kingsberry, right.
That's ridiculous, you know, and then they got the, they got the size of both sides of the road, but, nah, and that, when they did that, that was, that was years ago. But it's, it's something to think about.
Please talk, speak with Paul so that.
I, I will, I, I, I mentioned it to Mr. Howard as well, but, yeah.
The Barrington Ferry Road Roundabout, this, this, down there to seventeen is, constructions should take place sometime before the end of this state fiscal year too, starting in July, so it'll be from July twenty-five to June of twenty-six. Actually, is, is when that would happen, I'm sorry, July of twenty-four to June of twenty-five is when that would happen. And then the next one is, is one of the, I didn't even, hadn't even seen in the Hampo really, but it is a bike pedestrian improvement that comes from the U Center at Riceboro and runs to Riceboro Creek, and.
I didn't know that either.
I, I didn't know it, it's really outside the tip, they're talking about doing preliminary engineering in twenty-twenty-three on there. And so it hadn't even really been scheduled for any possible construction, but if, if you don't get it assigned, let's remember that. If you don't get one of these priority projects assigned to the STIP and, and in the planning process, you can't qualify for any grant funds from federal to state, so you'll have to have it on your plan to get that done.
Who would have any kind of design for that, is it too, too, too early to, to see?
It would be Riceboro's engineer.
Okay.
That would be doing that, probably Paul.
Paul, oh, okay.
Probably Paul, and then the last one is, is the bypass project, which is still showing utilities and construction in twenty-twenty-four, but I know that's going to be after July, so that'll be in there twenty-five fiscal year let, but it is still on schedule to be done.
And PE nineteen ninety-five.
Joey, on that one nineteen bypass, y'all probably have heard me talk about it, and I'm still gonna mention it. Bringing that traffic into one nineteen and including Barrington Ferry, a two-lane highway. Are there any other talks going up toward Atlanta to bring this project out, Mr. Chairman, to a four lane? It's dangerous, it's gonna make the funeral homes richer than what they are, and I meant exactly what I said. It's dangerous.
So it's coming right now in the two-lane section of one nineteen, as you're aware?
Right.
And, and, and then, you know, that's all GDOT would agree to try to fund, and so.
Have anybody tried to talk to anybody in Atlanta about it? Anybody?
What, about one nineteen or about?
About one nineteen, I mean, have we sent anybody up there to say, let's go lobby, let's see what we can do? Are we just sitting back taking what they're offering?
So there's a, a very defined process, Commissioner Stevens, you used to be able to go ask for money and just get it out of Atlanta? It doesn't happen that way anymore, you have to put it in a plan to even get GDOT to be able to put money in it. That road has always shown a two-lane for the last ten years.
But it did not have a bypass coming through it?
No, 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 a, as we have gone through the bypass process over the last ten years, it's always been shown as a two-lane route, every time we've seen it. That's what GDOT agreed to do because it's a state route. We did get GDOT to agree to do the shoulder widening on it, or the two-foot pavement extensions that they did a few years ago in anticipation of the bypass, but you don't have a, GDOT does not have a project on the books to four lane that road.
We have asked them to consider turning lanes, a passing lane, I'm sorry.
We have asked them to consider passing lanes on, on one nineteen.
We've been talking with them about just, just what you said, but now we haven't been to Atlanta, but that's been without GDOT. And then we've also spoken with our, our representatives.
We have, we've, we've been speaking with them, y'all to get too much off in the weeds, but, you know, one, one of the biggest problems that we heard was down at I ninety-five, right, at Midway, and all the traffic coming off the island, I know we've heard that loud and clear. So that has been the primary focus with GDOT, along with the eighty-four improvements through there that we've been focusing on with congressional delegation. We were told straight out by GDOT's folks, don't expect that to happen real quick, you'll have to get in line even for that project. Be glad to put the four lane of one nineteen in that line, but they are not going to fund that right now. I mean, it's just straight out from them, they're not gonna fund that right now, so.
Until somebody in a yellow truck get killed.
Yeah, I know, I know, and it's kinda like this, kinda like the.
One other thing, while you're doing your update, on that T-Splash list, we had down there two million for DS Smith Road. I still got a hot burn about that one.
Well, that'd be, yes, sir.
With everybody up here, cause there's no commissioner up here, has ever gotten two million dollars for roadways. This is an industry that's not really community oriented. Okay, not like Kimtale, and I'll say it.
Or Target, Tarzade.
So we already got one million, something set aside for that road, so we, we're gonna take splash money. I'm not saying it's not fair, but we got other roads in the county that's still dirt. Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Thrift, I think y'all know what I'm talking about. Have you ever gotten two million?
Yep.
Have you ever gotten two million? Commissioner Gillip, when you had a road, did you get two million?
I gave it to you, I guess.
But really, seriously, we need to reconsider that, and I, it, it's not, I've heard that it's based on, look at how many employees. How many employees down here actually work and pay taxes in Liberty County? They'll get off from interstate paper.
And where they go?
They may stop by Nick, get what they need to soup them up to get on home, and they going out of Liberty County. So it's not all of the workers, amount of workers there at DS Smith that's actually benefiting, it's the ones from out of the county.
But I will say.
We need to recon, we need to reconsider that, okay? Commissioner Jones, I know you still work out there, but, but I'm being open about it. We need to reconsider that two million dollars for that road. Now that means Liberty County Splash and T-Splash now is gonna pay, what, close three point three, three point six million dollars to do interstate road.
So, so, you know, that's totally up to you guys, well, it's actually part of the IGA, so all the municipalities would have to agree to drop it. But it would be totally up to y'all to do that, then you just have to figure out what funding source you wanna use to fix your county road, cause it is your property, so, you know, you'd have to take that out of adware and taxes or whatever you wanna do, but there are people that live on that road, so.
Without respect, I'm, I'm glad we're having this conversation. I, I, Mr. Chair, I remember a couple of years ago, when this first came up, and we were even having a discussion about giving that road to interstate. And I guess it was collective that we decided not to do it, I remember that.
Well, what you'd have to go through is an abandonment process, you could, you could abandon it, you're not saying that's the right thing to do, not suggesting that, but you go through a, a public hearing on abandonment, and then they get a chance to comment, so do the people that live on the road, you know, get a chance to comment. But those are really your two options.
I recall, some of it's county, some of it's.
The city of Riceboro.
City of Riceboro, that's correct.
Yeah.
A mine dute piece is, is.
And I have to say that the complaints, I've heard it been from Liberty County folk that work there, that's who I've heard complaints from by the.
I've heard all of it.
Well, cause.
So I've heard complaints from.
Mr. Chairman, when, when that thing first got.
Did you even get to finish it?
I guess, when the ramp, when the boat ramp was put in down there, the Development Authority had made some agreement that they were going to help, help out with it, and I, I don't know how many times it's been paved and resurfaced. I've been down it a, a, a lot of times, probably not as much as Maxie has here in the last ninety days, but the thing is, I mean, I, I feel like that we ought to be able to give a, a little bit, and I think DL Smith ought to give a little bit, and I think that if there's any money left in the Development Authority, they ought to be able to, and the city of Riceboro. I mean, it, every time you turn around, it's, you know, it's, it's a one big group trying to help. I don't have a problem, I think it needs to be paved, cause there is property on either side of it that will continue to grow. Some on the left, some on the right, but regardless, you gotta go for a, a ways there and just try to make this thing work. Whether they drive, I mean, half the people coming through on one ninety-six, they're going to Savannah to work, or they're going to somewhere else. So, you know, I don't have a, I just don't have a problem, but I don't want us to spend two million dollars down there on it, cause I could use five hundred thousand, and I'm sure some of these other folk could do five hundred thousand, but, you know, let's, let's see. Instead of kicking it to the side of the road, and it ain't my district, it's his, if he wants to do away with it, that's fine, but there, there are people in this community that work there, even though it's been changed from interstate paper to whoever else, how many times?
Yes, and now it's in the process of.
Who is it now, Maxie's it?
For right now.
Right now.
Right.
Entertaining another buyer.
I just think that before we spend money on it, and then they all decide to leave, what we got, we just gotta go, we got a road to nowhere, so. I've got roads that need paving too, and I'm gonna pave them.
I'll bring back that list again before, even, you know, we, we want us to pop back in here in July, especially with this conversation, pop back in here in July with an approval for a T-Splash list, we'll, we'll bring that back one more time too, and let you look at it then, so y'all can have some more discussion about it, okay?
Who all the stakeholders was in that, in the beginning, I think the Development Authority?
The Development Authority, I put some money and Riceboro put a little bit, when?
Well, I think we're talking about when it cranked up, you're talking about when the mill cranked up?
Oh, when it cranked up, it was the county.
When we built the ramp, see, that was part of the deal.
Oh, when we built the ramp.
We put the, we put the ramp in there, and I think they had the right hand side of that road, because I had to go down there and move all the coals out of the way. So I knew there was some.
No, I can't hear something.
I'll see if I can dig it back, yeah. Real quick legislative update, all these now, the ones I'm gonna show you have been signed into law. Personal property exemption went up from seventy-five hundred to twenty thousand, so, you know, that will impact us financially a little bit, mostly in the line of boats that are in that, but any personal property that was previously taxed, up from seventy-five to twenty thousand will now be exempt, starting this year. PTSD insurance for first responders, I think I mentioned that before, that's something we've, we've, we're having to add now on our insurance coverages. The single county T-Splash, you're familiar with those changes going from five year to six, and, and certain intergovernmental agreement changes. We talked about the opioid reversal agents and having those in county buildings where you had defibrillators, we're fully in compliant with that now. And then I didn't dare try to go into, I listed a few of the election bills, mostly just to give you an idea that that continues to be modified, tinkered with, whatever words you wanna use, there were a number of them, even more than these this year, but those are just a few of them.
Joey, the opioid reversal zone, so, had those, knock can, knock, what do you call it, has to be in every county?
Where you, where you have a defibrillator in there, or where you hold the county commission meeting. So even if we didn't, didn't have a defibrillator in this building, we'd have to have it in this building to do that.
Have one in here somewhere?
We do, we've put them with all the defibrillators and we've had folks undergo training on administration of those two.
So, just for instance, Public Works, they have.
They do, yes, sir, they do, they do.
But who, who would not have, what building would not have a, the complex hazard?
We've got, we've put defibrillators, we undertook that, probably, we bought, we bought it with insurance, safety, safety grant is what we did. And, and we did, we've got defibrillators in almost every county building now.
Next are our pitchers.
That's right.
We had them in every truck.
And then House Bill five eighty-one, which is that floating homestead exemption bill, we've talked about it briefly, it'll be on the, the referendum on the ballot November fifth to do that. If, there are two parts to it, again, if the referendum is approved out there by the state, it would, this fact, you see what else it removed that I mentioned earlier, but it basically then would allow taxing entities, if they didn't already have a homestead relief option like we do with Kemp, Deloach, Williams, if you're a taxing entity, you have to put one in place under the state model. If you do that, and everybody in the county does that, then you could have a local option sales tax, another one that can only be used for tax relief. Has to be used to roll back property taxes. But those are the caveats, first it's gotta pass by the voters, next, the city would need to also adopt a homestead exemption like that, a floating homestead exemption like Kemp, Deloach, Williams, if all those things took place, then you could have a referendum to have a tax relief, sales tax, but all those have to be in place.
But the city would have to?
City has to, would have to enact a floating homestead.
Because of?
Because they tax, they're a taxing entity. They're the only other one that taxes in the county, so they'd have to.
What about Wathawville, which in there, they're thinking about it, they would have to do the.
Not if they hadn't.
They haven't done it yet, but, you know.
Right, right, it would, it would depend on the timing, and if they had already gone and put one in place that was effective or compliant, then, yeah, they would have to also have a homestead relief bill, and the state's got that model, again, it looks exactly like the one that's in place here. So you wouldn't have to take any other action.
Who, you know, I didn't, I didn't realize that was being considered, where, where that?
ACCG?
ACCG.
I'm telling you.
Yes, sir. I remember that, it was there.
Matter, matter of fact, yeah.
So would this one, would this be on the ballot, possibly November?
November.
November. We need to push that one.
Would it be in plain English?
Yeah, I have, yeah, that's a great question, I haven't even seen the ballot question yet.
Actually, we need to push that one.
I can try to look that up, it should be in the law, it should be in that, in that law that was passed. And the other one that HB five eighty-one did, again, I guess, starting next year, is remove that tax estimate from the assessment notices.
Right.
Which is, as we talked about earlier, so confusing.
What about the fishing pier, Riceboro?
Fishing pier is, we got a, a partial state grant, we'll, we'll, we'll split that.
They probably don't know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll split that with Riceboro, our internal cost, I think we're like nine thousand dollars apiece, and then the state's gonna pick up fifty percent of that cost to do that, and they're gonna oversee the project and engage a contractor and do everything, so that's underway.
The fishing pier was in district pair, you all, and we had it, the yellow tape?
Well, somebody went and removed it, and I called Mr. Wells yesterday morning to go back down and put something else back up there.
Thank you very much, thanks for reminding me, reminding too. I know we've been working on that too.
Alright.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question since, the sidewalks on eighty-four, there's a do not use.
Down by the school.
Right.
And Flemington.
Absolutely.
So I can tell you what I know about that, is that, City of Flemington, City of Flemington project. The last I know about it is they were in litigation over it. Because the contractor did not finish the project.
It's washing, it's washing out.
I'm, I'm, I'm picking up what you're putting down.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. You too?
Yes, sir.
Don't forget about the hurricane briefing. Next Monday at the complex, 6 o'clock. And at Riceboro Youth Center at Wednesday, the 12th at 6 o'clock.
And in Gun Branch, we'll have the ribbon cutting for the new park equipment on the 14th, Friday at 11:00 a.m.
Y'all send reminders up, please.
Thank you.
Yes. Reminders.
Even a hurricane.
All that.
Yeah.
Can't have too many reminders.
You know, some, some of us now retired, you know, you know.
I don't mean nothing.
Do we need to go and?
Do for a property acquisition matter.
Chair, tell them what you're gonna executive session.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands.
All right.
Non-executive session.